I'd like to call the meeting to order. This time, could we please stand for the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and free of injustice. All right, this time, start off with the approving the, we're going to amend the agenda. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include Item C under Board Business, which is the second reading of Policy 7680 regarding independent educational evaluations.
Did you ask for a motion?
I made a motion. I need a second.
I didn't understand what you were doing again.
Adding this to the policy that's 7680, a second reading of it. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Is there any other changes to the consent agenda that I would need a motion to amend the consent agenda? All right, at this time, open up the floor to public comment. Keep in mind, the Board of Education values public input. However, Board of Education meetings are open to the public, but not a public meeting. With that being said, please keep comments civil and three minutes or less. Thank you. And please approach the table and speak into the microphone.
Debbie Hiver, 7341 Lakeside Road, Ontario. A couple of things. One, I just wanted to congratulate Mike Pullen and his team for the award of a reward school. Actually, I'd never heard of that award before, but there's been some good coverage in the papers and on the website as well. I just want to congratulate him. Second, the last meeting you had a discussion about the public questions and answers on the website. However, there wasn't any action, and we all know that there's a difference between discussion and action. When will you be taking action to ensure the timely posting of questions asked at board meetings and the timely posting of those answers? If you look on there now, they're several months old and nothing's been added for a while. Thank you.
I live at 119 Winesap Lane, Ontario. My concern today is the fact that we don't have a no-nit policy in effect for our school district. Myself and other concerned parents have already been through the chain of command with no results, and the process of lice removal is both very timely and costly, and we would like to see a no-nit policy take effect this school year. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Hi, I'm Catherine Burris. I live at 21 Macintosh Road in Ontario. I'm also here about head lice. My daughters had it twice already in the first month of school, and it's cost me a fortune to get rid of it both times. And honestly, it's a little tiring, so I'd like to see a no-nit policy at Wayne Central. Every other school may come and have it.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment?
My name is Delilah Wilson. I live at 11 Baldwin in Ontario. I'm here for the no-nit policy also. I've been to the school board, I've been to the principals, I've been to nurses. I have six children in the school district, so I would like something done also because it's very costly and very time consuming. I have two daughters with very long hair, and it takes them very long time. So if you guys could address that, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you. At this time, do we have any board member comments? Go ahead, Pam.
I just wanted to let the board know that Ron and I attended the four-county legislative meeting about a week and a half ago. They had a guest speaker there, John Sipple from Cornell, and he spoke about the state's charge to districts about sharing services with municipalities and outside services. He offered a statistic that it could potentially lower per student costs. There were some qualifications to it, but it was an interesting talk, and the state is looking for the districts to do more sharing of services. We also sat with the superintendent and two board members from the Geneva schools, and it was interesting because they had just done a superintendent search, I think, in the last year and a half. And Ron asked them what they thought was the most important thing that they did for the search, and they said the very most important thing was before they even looked at applications is that the board sat down and each board member wrote down characteristics that they wanted the superintendent to have, and then as a whole, you picked the ones you wanted, and that's how it helped them narrow their search down.
Okay, thank you. Jeremy?
I know this time of year, we normally get to go to the Wayne Technical Center, and they're not having their open house in October this year, so our board meeting will not be there. I have been contacted by community members and wondering why, if we're going there not knowing what was going on, just out of concern to go. I contacted the principal of the technical center. They are having an open house that will be open to the public. He said it will be bigger and better than ever to benefit more kids, and it will be, it's scheduled for the 19th of March from 6:00 to 8:00. So our meeting won't be there, but it will be open to the public, so if we would like to go, we can go.
Thank you. Any other?
I just wanted to touch on the fact that it was brought up at the last meeting, and that was, and as a follow-on, we had a couple of board members comment on the fact that, internally, I should say, asking about the fact that there were, that the agenda had been streamlined, and we had removed one of the public comment sections as well as one of the board member comment sections. And I wanted to, you know, John had graciously, who's not here, had graciously offered to, as he put in his email, to take the hit for it. But I wanted to take a little bit more of the responsibility, maybe as a board in whole, and say that part of that decision was to streamline the agenda, was to cut it down from such long meetings. Some of the other input that John had was that he felt that it was redundant on the agenda, and that, he actually, actually also said that he thought it was a little bit more professional to cut down some of the redundancy on the agenda. Then he did also mention that there are multiple ways to get in touch with the board, and although the public comment is a great section to reach us, there are also multiple other methods that people have to reach us, everything from grabbing us at the very end of this meeting all the way to emails and some of the new links we put on the website. So although John did graciously offer to take the hit for that, I think it really falls more on us to really say that now that we're aware of it, and it seems like we're all okay with having one public comment session, and I just wanted to address that and say that I don't think it's up to John to necessarily own that as much as it's on us.
And just to add on that, I just, you know, there's many ways, emails, phone calls, in-person contacts, that, you know, we've been very receptive people, so again, taking it off and saving some time on the agenda, because sometimes we were putting 15 minutes in here or there that, you know, made other things look like they're going to be taking a longer time to get to, and then it seems to work better that way for us, I think, to plan how long things are going to be, and maybe we can add some more workshops in or, you know, some more reports that we'd like to see. So I thought that was a good addition for that. Also, I'd like to remind the board that we've added on November 20th is a workshop, and it's on budget, so that was an addition to the one meeting we had in November before, so that will be occurring on November 20th. Any other board comments?
Tim, can you just comment as to the time and location of that workshop?
I didn't see that yet. I just assumed, probably be in the cafeteria at, same as all the other ones are going to be, at 7 o'clock, I believe. All right, no other comments? All right, this, like, point I'd like to turn over to Joe for a superintendent's report.
Thanks, Tim. I'm going to start out with some student recognition, student staff recognition. First, I'd like to, I guess I could use this. You heard in an earlier presentation by me, one of the things I mentioned was the talented students we have here at Wayne. Every year, we have a disproportionate representation at the NISMA area all-state music festival, and this year's no different. We have 21 students being represented at that, at that event, too numerous to go through each name, but congratulations to all of them for their success. Next, we have Mr. Dave Marine, Coach Marine. He was named the Football Coach of the Week by the Buffalo Bills and the National Guard High School Football Coaches Association. For that, he earns $2,000 for his program, as well as a couple of Bills tickets to an upcoming game, not this Sunday, however. So congratulations to Dave and his whole, I'm sure he would, he would recognize his entire staff for that reward as well. Next, I'd like to talk a little bit about some upcoming field trips with you. A field trip is simply defined as, has an experience away from school that could otherwise not be gained while at school. It could include a walking field trip, an area during the school day field trip, or a museum, or a theater event, or it could also include overnight night trips. Depending on the nature of the field trip, the regulations dictate the level of approval. So the first one is a walking field trip. That could be to the local library, or a store, or through the nature trails, or whatever. Walking field trips that don't involve transportation simply require a teacher request and a principal approval. School day field trips, if they require transportation or employ school bus drivers, require the teacher to gain the principal's approval and the superintendent's approval. And then overnight field trips, which is what I'll share with you on the next slide, again, require teacher request, principal approval, superintendent approval, and then notification of the board, which is what I'm doing tonight. I'm going to notify you of a couple of trips. And then our out-of-the-country field trips actually go a step further. They require Board of Ed approval through that normal chain. We have two field trips appropriately. They're both music-based. First of all, at our middle school level, we have about 100 students going to Hershey Park on May 29th and 30th. That's an overnight field trip. They'll be adjudicated, they will enjoy, and enjoy the park as well. I've actually been asked if I would chaperone that with them, and I said yes. The high school select choir and jazz band are going to be headed to Cedar Point. They'll also be adjudicated, or, you know, scored on their musical talents, and they'll spend the day at Cedar Park. We're looking at 30 to 40 high school students for that event. Are there any questions about the field trips or the process? Adjudicated, yeah. I will say that I learned that myself fairly recently. The next thing that we'd like to present with you is, oops.
Do you have field trips that are long, far away? How is that, or how are they transported? Is it always our buses with our drivers, or do we rent the coaches and then you secure and make sure that the, like Fred goes through and make sure that their safety regulations meet our safety regulations?
Sure.
What determines what goes on a school bus and what goes on a coach bus?
That is determined by the trip sponsor. So our senior trip to New York City, we always take, we always take tour buses, and some of the more local ones. We had a, we had a field trip by the music, middle school music, that went on school buses, I think, to Darien Lake. They just took regular school buses, but, you know, there's costs associated with both. They, it depends how far away it is, how much they're trying to conserve costs, those kinds of things. But it's always approved through the process, so some of our bigger trips are more club-sponsored. The Spanish club might, might go to Costa Rica, or we had a trip to Paris recently. So, but everything must go through the approval process, and they have to be about it.
Does the Board of Education ever be asked to be a chaperone?
Typically, it's teachers who directly support, and then volunteers report to the teachers, but there are times when we don't, when we have community members chaperon. You know, the, we like to have a ratio of 10 to 1 typically for overnight trips, and out of the country, it's 6 to 1. During the day trip, we, we can do it with 20 to 1, but we typically will bring parent volunteers during that, to those, so, or board member volunteers.
Yeah, okay.
So do you, can you do the link? Because I have my, the next thing on the agenda is, and I'll apologize if I'm going too fast and going to get you home too early tonight. Not my intent to give you a night off, but we're going to present instructional technology in our schools. We think it's appropriate to do that because October is Connected Educator Month. With me tonight to do that are Barb Heald and Brittany Pulsini. Barb is our Director of Technology, so she, her role is, she's in charge really of coordinating all things technology, everything from software to infrastructure to smart boards to, to just everything. And then Brittany is our Instructional Technology Trainer. She helps make sure that that equipment that we have gets put to good use. She hosts many staff development opportunities for teachers. She also coaches teachers directly, one-to-one, and in small groups or grade-level teams. It's important to have both of these roles, somebody to bring and coordinate all the technology, and then somebody else to make sure that the support is there for the teachers so that we could maximize the application of those tools. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brittany.
Thank you, Joe. So October, like Joe mentioned, is Connected Educator Month, so it's one of our focuses for this month. It's a great learning opportunity for our teachers to explore technology that will allow them to access global networks of experts and educators that are invested in the learning and teaching and learning processes they are. The Teaching and Learning Center, so Sue Mack and I are the co-directors of the Teaching and Learning Center, so we've been promoting Connected Educator Month, and we've kind of partnered up with Powerful Learning Practice. They have a nice starter kit for educators to get connected, and they've put forth a 31-day challenge where they've proposed a technology tool each day for an educator to kind of take the time to look through that opportunity and find a new tool to get connected with other educators across the country. And then we've put together a survey for each of them. If they decide to participate in one of those day challenges, to share their experiences out with their other colleagues. So that's what we're doing for Connected Educator Month in October.
So we all know that technology changes very rapidly, and it's the speed of that change that kind of muddies the waters when it comes to the decision-making process, and that's just not in education. That's all over, and in considering whether you become reactive to those changes or proactive and you're strategic in that planning. It's a solid mission statement that helps us to stay grounded. Based on the mission at Wayne Central School District, the technology vision is to improve student achievement through the seamless integration of technology into the curriculum and instructional environment, to enhance communication between the school and larger community, and to facilitate the acquisition of 21st century skills that will prepare students to be successful in an ever-changing global community. Technology here at Wayne is grounded in the student outcomes and success. Technology here at Wayne is grounded in the instructional and teaching learning process at the student level, at the teacher level, and at the organizational level as a whole. Daily, we question and we have conversations about the right tool for the task. The past 20 years, there's been quite an evolution of technology. If I click right on this, will it start it? Okay. So I'd like you to, this shows a real nice image about what technology has been in the past 20 years, not here just at Wayne, but everywhere. Well, in 1995, that marks the year, January 11th to be exact, because I just looked at the technology plan of Wayne Central School District, the very first formalized technology plan of Wayne Central Schools, and that was in 1995. And at that time, students experienced 2E, Apple 2E computers. Remember those with the big, I didn't mean to look at you because you wouldn't remember that. The big floppy disks that were in those Apple 2Es, right? There was one per maybe grade level. I can remember being in the kindergarten classroom and a whole row of students lined up to the Apple 2E to do Bailey's Book House. And they'd take their turn, and they'd go back to the back, and, you know, so that was 1995. And that was the year, and the following two or three years, right Greg? It was like a three-year process for the tech plan, that whole process? We started bringing in PCs into the classrooms to where we had multiple computers at each grade level at that point, and from kindergarten all the way up to the high school. We started to see a glimmer of what technology would do for education at that time. It really was around research and kind of reinforcing knowledge and skills is where we were then. 1995 was also the year that I started at Wayne, and I was a one-to-one aide and worked with a student who had CP. This student, that was also the year where it start, where we started to look at adaptive technology and assistive technology. This particular student, she was in a wheelchair, and she did not have, she was nonverbal. She was in kindergarten. She was, did not have control over her extremities. She used the computer, which was brand new to me at the time, by the way. And I could watch her and work with her to actually participate in lessons and activities that the year before was, wasn't possible, really. For one example, there was an activity at one point where students were learning directional words, and they were starting to get into north, south, east, west. They were drawing, this was in first grade. She, they were drawing pictures of their bedrooms, and just drawing out a map of their bedroom. And, you know, before that, a student such as this student would have sat and watched somebody do it for them. Because we had the adaptive equipment where she could control the computer with her knee, she couldn't kick very well, but she could use her entire leg she had more control over, so she could click the computer. She was able to, through a program, print out and draw a picture just like the rest of her, the students in her classroom. She was part of the educational process, whereas before, she would have taken a back seat to it, to an activity like that. That was the first bug for me as far as technology and education. And what I realized was, you know, for so many of our kids, technology really helps the learning process, but for some, just like Jen back then, it made learning possible for her. So, you know, fast forward 20 years, and this is where we are now. 1995 was also the time where we started, we created the infrastructure. We brought internet, we brought email into the classrooms. I remember being at Freewill when internet was first, or not internet, but email was first proposed to the teachers. There were teachers that would email each other and run across the room, across the hallway, to see if the teacher on the other side of the hallway got the email. I think even the principal at the time gave out prizes of ice cream for teachers that would respond to his emails, and that's how we started communication back then. So anyway, I regress. So 20 years later, you know, it's our responsibility with the fast pace of change, if you think about where it was 20 years ago and those cluttered desks, the way that we are now with this laptop and the way we've got our mics and we're videotaping, we really need to, it is our responsibility to not only keep up, but to stay in, stay in front of those rapid changes through strategic, realistic, and effective planning. Today, we have computer labs, mini laptops, laptop carts, classroom iPads, iPad, iPod carts, wireless access, and the list goes on and on. How do I find the arrow? So this year also marks a time where we have the ability or the opportunity to update our technology plan. What you see in front of you is a technology committee. There are members and representatives of teachers from each school. There's a special education teacher. There are two students from the high school, one from the high school, one from the middle school, two administrators, myself and Stephanie Miller from the high school. The focus, the primary focus of our technology committee this year, like I said, was to update that technology plan. Our focused areas are around instructional, the instructional piece, operational, and the infrastructure needs for the next three to five years. We have four areas that we're going to be focusing on. That is around student, technology literacy, becoming digital leaders, digital citizens. It's around communication. It's around the tech resources, whether it be equipment or software, and it also is around teacher literacy with professional development. One thing that I do want to ask the Board of Education tonight, something for you to think about, we would love it, and I asked the committee to see what they thought, you know, for their input, we would love it if a board member or two would join us on that committee. I did talk to Joe about it. He thought it was a great idea. Talked to John, they were both in support of it. I know all of you are really busy. Some of our times that we're meeting is during the day. The next one, in fact, is in December. There's a half-day staff development day, so we are going to meet in the morning of that full, of that day, and I believe it's December 11th, I believe, is the day. If you could give that some, some thought, discuss it, and let John know if that's something that one or a few of you may be interested in doing, joining us with that. And I'm going to actually now turn it over to Brittany. She's going to talk a little bit about some of the professional development that's going on in the district.
So last year, I was able to offer quite a few different professional learning opportunities to the teachers, from things like smart notebook training all the way to Twitter for professional development. And then this summer, with the help of many other teachers, we were able to facilitate 12 breakout sessions during new teacher orientation, and we offered that opportunity up to the rest of the staff, and many of them took advantage of that opportunity to come in over the summer and participate in those learning opportunities side by side with our new teachers, which was great. This year, I'll continue to offer opportunities based on the results from the survey that I received from the staff at the beginning of the school year, as well as the, our students' needs that come up. I would love, on my webpage and also on the Teaching and Learning Center webpage, there's a link to all the upcoming opportunities that's updated regularly, and I would love if you guys take a look at that. If there's any session that you find interesting and want to attend, we would love to have you join us. With that, I'd like to share a little video with you of some of the technology that we are already utilizing here at Wayne. Some of the teachers and the students would like to share their experiences with you. Some of the teachers and the students would like to share their experiences with you. I love using the BioNinja app on my iPhone because it helps me prepare for IV biology.
I use technology like OneDrive from Microsoft, which allows me to store all of my documents in the cloud. From there, I can access all of these documents from anywhere at any time.
Action.
Hi, everyone. I'm Cara. I like to use the iPads to practice my important math skills for extra math.
Hi, my name is Joanne, and I like, and I love reading, and I use the iPads and Raz Kids.
Thank you.
So in this short presentation, you've been invited to join a technology committee. You've been invited to come to professional development. Any professional development offerings you want, and we have yet one more invitation for you. The Nice Gate Conference is coming up in November, November 23rd to 25th. And we would invite any interested board members to attend that conference. At that conference, you can learn about new technologies, new ways to use technology in the field of education. It wouldn't be unprecedented for a board members to attend. Matter of fact, a couple of years ago, we had two board members attend that conference with teachers, and the experience was very fruitful. The conversation that happened during the conference between the staff and the board, the discussion of the possibilities, it was beneficial. So again, we understand how busy you are, so we put these invitations out here, not as a burden, but just as, you know, an offering. It varies. What did we have to?
It varies. We usually have anywhere from six to seven people go. It's nice because it's right in Rochester, so it's very cost-effective. This year, I've got a good portion of the technology committee of teachers are going with us, so.
On the, with all this technology we got, abs and tees. Do we have anything for the kids at home, you know, that, a flu, long time being out or something like that, you know, or some kind of illness that keeps them out for a while? Can we use anything like that yet, or have we, do we have that?
We do. I'm glad you asked. We have, at various levels, yes. From the extreme cases, not extreme, but where, where a student is out for a long term, we're able to provide them with whatever type of equipment at home if they don't have it. And we, we literally use Skype to come back and forth. We've, we've used different tools just like that, but Skype is one of the more recent ones, the one, you know, more productive ones, I think, where the student is actually part of the classroom. You've all participated, possibly with webinars, where you just watch at home on your screen what's going on on the, the teacher's computer screen. We're able to do that as well from the teacher's smart board. The student can log into that session, and they can watch what's going on on the smart board. We have teachers also who post a lot to their webpages, a lot of different training videos, right Brittany? Where they just post it to their website, and students can go home, while they're home, and they can watch what's going on. We have a few flipped classrooms where they're doing the same thing.
So that also helps with homework and stuff like that, too? Very good. Thank you.
I was just going to say, there's a couple of teachers that have really started utilizing the videos to, to do lessons so that the kids, when they go home, can re-watch that lesson, or if they were absent, watch that to really help support their learning at home. And I think on the video you saw Erin Altmeier, she does that over at Freewill, and even the parents, you know, have commented that it's great for them because now they can support their students where before they didn't know how to help them.
Dennis, you may have noticed I wasn't at the last board meeting. I was out of town. My daughter was with me at a national competition. And she got assignments, class notes, she submitted homework, she did a quiz on the internet so that she didn't really miss any work while she was gone. She did it all online. And I was also going to say, you forgot my personal favorite, Power School, because I get the emails. And if one of my kids, you know, I don't, I don't have to drag information about how my kids are doing in school out of the kid. It gets emailed to me, so I can follow up. I just think that's fantastic.
No, I just, you know, 20 years ago is when, you know, my girl started in kindergarten, I think in 94. And we did, we had that one thing with the Bailey's Book House, and I was the mother helper. And, and I just can't believe it now where, you know, I walk into a classroom where I am, and, you know, years ago, you would, if you wanted to order the hamburger, you put your stick in a can. And if you wanted the pizza, you put your stick in this can. And now we've got first graders that go to a smart board and click what they want, and it all is just tallied, and you're watching them, they're six years old. They're better at it than, you know, the adults, and it just is the way of the world. And it's unbelievable what these kids know coming out. I mean, if you have a problem with your computer, you just give it to some 17-year-old and they'll fix it. You know, it just, it's amazing what can be done, you know, globally. You know, talk to people across the country. You know, there's no pen pals anymore. We just Skype with another classroom. And the kids, you know, especially with the instant gratification, they don't have to wait for that letter. They can just, you know, at 2 o'clock, we're going to Skype with, you know, Mrs. So-and-so in California, and there the kids are. And it's just this engagement, I guess, is what the, what it is. It's, it's just that they're engaged in learning something that will continue to evolve. And I just don't know what, you know, you think like, okay, this is where we're at. It's gonna, and then 20 years will go by and you're like, how did we even survive with just an iPhone? Now we have this. So it's great. And I'm going to, I want you to write down your, your little link or whatever, because I do need some professional development.
I'll second that.
We'll go together, Tim.
And just, so we'll get things moving for you. Is there anybody interested in being on the committee with them for the technology committee that has the time during the day? If not, Ron's not here. I'll volunteer him. I'm just kidding. Is there anybody? Just checking if anybody, so make sure we get back to him on that. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
How's that?
All right, we'll move on to board business. First part on there was student representative. That's something we brought up before. And just want to have a little discussion on it, think, see where we can go with it. So, anybody would like to start?
I'd definitely like to see it brought back. I think it was a good thing. A student always made a presentation about what's going on with, in school. I think it's something we need.
I'm definitely in favor of it as well. I don't have the experience of having seen it before, but I definitely think it's a good idea and support it. It would probably be a little bit of a, of a work in progress is exactly how we'll go about doing it, whether it's the same student all the time, or if it's a rotating seat, but I think it's a great idea. The only thing I found that's worth noting when I was looking, when I was using the internet to look at the idea and some of the other concepts that have been done around the state and around the country was that I was curious myself as to whether they voted. In, in New York, they do not vote. Just throw that out there.
In the past, I'm pretty sure they used the student council, didn't they? And they actually did rotate the kids around a little bit. You know, like one kid would come for this month, and then they would have another. So it did rotate around, and it did give, and they also, if I remember correctly, they even went to the middle school and grabbed somebody. I, I think they did. I can't really remember, but yeah, it was a great thing, I really think. And it really gives those board members a chance to actually ask the student how things going, and you get the insight from the student, so I think it's something really good. I just know how our teachers are doing.
Maybe to move on from this, it's not something we would ask somebody to do or make them do. I think maybe just if we approach Mike Pollan to check on the way that we would like to approach it this year, get information from the students, and, you know, whether it's student government, whether it's student council, whether it's class representatives, and whether they want to rotate somebody or... I mean, usually the people that want to do something like that are always very busy, and it, it's kind of hard to make that commitment for every meeting. But, you know, maybe put them on right at the beginning of the meeting also in our agenda that they can bring up items of interest to them and, you know, report out on what's going on. So everybody agree, maybe just, I'll mention it to Mike Pollan if he can come up with an idea from the students and the staff themselves.
Because I know our, my first year, we had the student representative, and it changed every meeting. And it was an update, and it was nice. It was nice to know what was going on in the building. They did the atta boys that we do now for the building and let us know what's going on. One of the things I was not concerned with, but think we need to talk about if we're going to bring it back, I believe it was Phil, maybe Ron, that sent the website around. We need to have, know beforehand, because some of those were the students being on committees, taking part in board business. I don't know, do we want that, or do we just want a student to come, sit, give us the skinny of what's going on in the building? And thank you, and, or do we want them to be an active member of the board?
Well, I think in the past, it's only been as a representation for the student body. They didn't actually conduct board business.
I understand that, but some of the reading that I had, that's a possibility, some places do that. So I'm just saying, we need to know ahead of time, we need to know what we want before we ask them to give it to us.
I was kind of looking at what we had before in the past.
Okay, now Joe, when he was principal, had some student representatives, I believe. He can maybe add a little bit on his take on it.
Sure. We did a few things exactly as you guys were talking. We had rotated from the, we used the class officers, and we rotated from the freshman to the sophomore to the junior class and so on. We, at one point, we experimented with having students for multiple meetings because we wanted students to get comfortable and to kind of participate a little bit more. We, we presented tonight the instructional technology in our schools, and we shared with you that we involved the students in that committee. So when you have committees like the communication committee and things of that nature, you could consider down the road, student representative or not involving students in those committees. But what seems to work best is the, is the class government, students coming on and doing that. But I, but I agree with Tim. Tim and I talked about this earlier today, working with Mike Pollan to see what he thinks is the best way to, to involve those students. I do think we would want to have a frame, or you would want to have a framework as a board for what you're looking for, you know.
Joe, does everyone take government?
It's not the students who, who take government, it's the students who are on student council.
Okay, so they're the student government of the school.
Mm-hmm. They've been elected by their class, so they're class officers.
Because I know Tim said something about, you know, the student, the government students who take government to maybe ask them.
Seniors, pretty much seniors take, take government, half your course. Every single senior has to take that course. That would be a way to open it up to the entire student body who's interested, working with the government teachers to pick a student or two, I suppose, you know.
I'd like to, to see us get into this as quick as possible with the beginning steps of at least getting an update from the students like we used to get before we even discussed the rest of it, what we might evolve to. Just get, get into what we used to do just a few years ago, as soon as they're ready to do it. That's where I would be.
Well, and I just wonder, like, you know, I mean, obviously, we don't want the kids on auditor policy. They'd be asleep. But, but maybe like on communications, you know, that's a way for our roundtable work to get out maybe a little bit more into the public. I mean, we can do so much with the website and, you know, the internet and things, but if, if kids were on the, maybe, you know, communication, at least, it might give them a little voice in, in, in that piece. So, I mean, we definitely got some exploration to do, but I think we're all on the same page. We'd like to get some input from Mike as to what he thinks would be good and, and develop a, a plan for that.
Okay. I'll talk to Mike and just see if he can get, just volunteer to come to the next meeting just to start off and just get it moving. I think they can get it going as quick as they can, and then they can come up with, you know, they can hash out who's coming. Yeah, so we'll get going. Okay. Thank you. The next part of board business, B, is the annual fire inspector appointment that we have to act on. Greg, you want to share us the information on that?
Yes, every year, the school district is required by law to have a fire inspection done. And it changes each year. It's done a different month from the previous year. And this year, I believe it'll be in January. And a lot of times, by the time we get the notification, sometimes there's not two board meetings a month. So we wanted to get to the board tonight, the recommendation to appoint the both, BOC's Health and Safety Unit to do the fire inspection, and then Bob Miller to be the district representative to respond to any questions or corrective action that is part of that. The inspection will take place in a couple of months, but this way, we're ahead of the game if the board's already made the approval as far as appointing who does the inspection.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I need a motion to approve the annual fire inspector appointment. Matt, second. Karen, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Moving on to the agenda amended, amended agenda. Need a, a motion to approve the second reading of the Policy 7680 regarding independent educational evaluations. Pam, second. Karen, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. At this time, like, take a quick break, and we'll let any students that are here that want to get their papers signed and move along. You're welcome to stay the rest of the time if you like, but just come on up, and any board member can sign for you. I wanted to make sure you were here for the student representative part, or I'd let you go earlier. Okay, let's move along here. We're going to, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Jeremy, second. Carla, any discussion? Oh, there's no discussion in the consent agenda, sorry. All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right, now we'll get some committee reports. Jeremy, Communications Committee?
Two things to report. Our first roundtable will be... Our first roundtable will be the middle school library, the 13th of November, 7:00 to 8:00 PM. We're going to have our roundtable discussion based on the facilities preservation project, updates on where we stand, what the buildings look like, how everything's going, and then we're going to try our best to save some time for future possible needs of the district, and where we see ourselves heading. The next one would just be our next regularly scheduled meeting is on the 6th of November, 5 o'clock in the district office, right before our first board meeting of the month.
Hey, thanks, Jeremy. Audit Committee, Matt?
Okay, there's nothing further from the last meeting. We haven't met again. Just a reminder, our next meeting is October 30th, and I believe it's in the conference room, if it's still available. I think, I think it's scheduled for the conference room, right? Yeah. That's it.
Okay. Policy Committee, Karen?
We actually met today, and we'll be meeting again on November 6th, 4:00 PM. And again, I assume it's in the district conference room. We'll be...
No, we're getting a no over there.
I'm getting a no? Okay, then we'll, we'll figure out where it is. But the, we're continuing to work our way through the 8,000 section of policy and some other items that have come up over the summer, the things we just want to check and make sure our policies are consistent.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we're moving on to board president comment, and at this time, I don't want to be wordy, so I will have none. And motion for adjournment. Dennis, second. Jeremy? Thank you.